I think Mr. Bass is going to bang the gavel, but I'm not going to. Good evening and welcome to the Highland Village City Council Early Work Session. Today is Tuesday, May the fourteenth. It is six P M. The call this meeting to order left record shows that all council members are present with the exception of Mr. Tusk. So first, we're going to get started with a presentation of a two thousand and twenty four resident satisfaction survey. And Lori Mullins.
Mayor and council, thank you. We are excited to share the survey results with you. In this survey, we're going to hear about the residents' perceptions and satisfaction levels. But I think the survey also tells the story of why many of you have sought to be reelected to council and why some of you keep coming back again. But really and truthfully, we do have a great presentation for you today. We contracted with New Way Insight. You will remember that's the company that we used to do our retail and restaurant survey last year. They administered the survey for us from February twenty second through March thirty first. What's different about this presentation this time is that Dr. Dries Knut and Jacob Badenhorst were in Texas at this time, and so Dries and Conrad are going to be able to be here to present to us in person this time. Instead of making him stay up till two in the morning and then present over Zoom. So I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Dries Knut and Conrad Smith and let them present.
Good evening. Thanks a lot, everybody. It's a real privilege to be here. Yes, I'm from South Africa. You can probably tell from the accent. Been enjoying the wonderful Texas weather for the last three weeks. Try to adapt my accent a bit, but I'm failing miserably with that. I know how to say welcome you all, so there's a lot for the opportunity. There's really some great insights. And I must say, having been here the last three weeks, staying in Highland Village, I must say you've got a wonderful experience. We really enjoyed it. And we are glad to be able to share the results with you. So I think we can make it interactive. If you have any questions or any comments about anything, just stop me and we can have a short discussion about anything that we're going to share with you. I think it's important for us to understand what we present and then also have a bit of a discussion around. So please stop me at any time when you have any questions. Right, so we'll have a look at the project background, the sample realized and some of the demographic details, resident satisfaction expectations, the apartment results, the quality of life, some problems that residents indicated that they experienced in the last couple of months, overall satisfaction and loyalty, and then some conclusions and recommendations. So just in terms of the project background, we design resident satisfaction models. So this is typically what your model looks like. It starts off with the resident expectations, and I think it's important to understand that everything is evaluated from the point of what residents expect. And as a starting point, your residents have quite high expectations of you, so it is sometimes difficult to meet those expectations. But it's important to understand that whenever we look at something, it's from the point of view of what they expect. Then we're going to have delve into the city departments and details about that. There are some emotional and some rational measures. The emotions always play a role in whatever we do and how we evaluate our living environment. We'll have a look at perceived value, and that's always a trade-off between the costs that they pay, whether that's financial in terms of taxes or emotional in terms of effort that they have to go through to achieve something versus the benefits that they get from living in Highland Village. Then we'll have a look at problems that they experienced, how that impacts overall satisfaction. And there's quite an interesting paradox which we will share with you. And then finally, the loyalty and trust within the environment. Okay, I'm not going to stand still at this slide. All of this will be in the rest of the presentation. So a bit of background about the research process. We always follow a very scientific approach when we do these types of studies. It's important to do that so that we know that we can trust the results. The moment you start questioning what it is that we see, then you can't really implement something on the back of the results. So we had a, the questionnaire design is the first piece, so we had various workshops with lots of stakeholders to understand what are the things that we want to measure. Then we did the online data collection. We used all of these different channels to collect the data. The analysis and reporting was done, and we are currently in the last phase where we are doing some of these workshops. There is another phase, and that is really the implementation of the results. So what are the decisions that the city is going to make and what are the things that you're going to implement? It's not always an easy decision to make those decisions, and we will be here to guide you through that process. If you need advice or guidance in terms of that, we will also assist you in that. Okay, so just in terms of the goal, Highland Village Resident Satisfaction Product aim to boost resident satisfaction by optimizing city resources for a better livability and sustainable development. And I think that is what we're trying to achieve. We want to achieve something where all our residents are satisfied and happy and where the city really provides to them what they expect. In terms of the demographics, that is the spread between the four different areas. On the right-hand side, you will see we had a sample of five hundred and eighty-seven residents completing the survey. Although that might not seem enough for a large population, it is results that are statistically significant. From a scientific research point of view, the moment you have a sample of above three hundred and eighty for any population larger than twenty thousand, you have statistically significant results. And you will see it's significant on a ninety-five percent confidence level. What that means is if we repeat the study, we can be ninety-five percent sure that the results are going to be the same. And that is what you want. You want to be able to trust the research, make sure that it's reliable. So that sample gives us a reliable, significant indicator for the results that we're going to. In terms of the demographics on the left-hand side, age, we see quite a good spread, although we had more older people completing the survey. It's a nice spread across the different age groups, and that's what you want. You don't want one age group to dominate the survey. You can see the spread between males and females is also quite good. In the past, we didn't have a lot of males completing the survey, so at least we have a masculine voice in our results as well. The education, everybody is highly educated, and that is what you expect from a city like this. And then ninety-nine percent of residents own their own property. Only one percent said that they rented, and that really talks to the loyalty and the commitment that they have towards the city itself. Income, again, a good spread, although we see a large majority of residents in the high-income groups. And then how long they've been living in Highland Village, forty-three percent living here more than twenty years. So really established neighborhood, established residents that have been living here for a long time. Right, so let's start with a piece about the expectations. So you will see an expectation of seventy-six point two. That is a score out of a hundred. So first off, that is quite a high expectation. Whenever we do studies like this, you might get expectations in the sixties or seventies. Seventy-six point two is a very high level of expectation. But immediately, we saw in the results that there are two groups of residents. The one group of residents, you will see on the right-hand side, that forty-four percent said that we don't meet their expectations, while we have fifty-six percent of residents that say that we do meet their expectations. So immediately, we see that there are two groups of residents. Those where we do not meet their expectations, their expectations on eighty-five, those where we do meet the expectations is on a seventy-three, while overall our expectations on a seventy-six. So these two groups of residents, and we will explain to you a bit about them, what those where we don't meet their expectations, what are some of those reasons, and then we can try to fix that. The other thing that was quite interesting is, again, that is our overall expectations. We, from the loyalty questions that we asked, we also realized that there were three groups of residents. Those that are least loyal, those that are generally more loyal, and those that are extremely loyal. And the moment, and you can see that those that are extremely loyal have higher expectations from the city than those that are not loyal. So those residents that are committed, they've been staying here for a long time, they feel that they contribute, they have higher expectations, and that is, the challenge is to try to meet those expectations as well. So let's delve into some of the department results. So this is just the distribution of the different departments. Each department had their own set of questions. And this was really residents who had direct contact with any of the different departments. So we can see police, thirty percent of residents indicated that they had a direct contact with the police department. Public works, also thirty percent, parks and recreation, nineteen percent, fire and emergency services, twelve percent, and then the interaction drops a bit. But we can see that a large majority of our residents had a direct interaction with these different departments. On the right-hand side, we won't go into detail, but we just explained to them before they completed the survey, those are type of services that you had, and then you had an interaction with them. So if we look at the overall satisfaction for the different departments, that yellow line indicates our overall expectation on the seventy-three. So the overall satisfaction is a measure of how well you compare with residents' expectations. So we can see fire and EMS, overall satisfaction on eighty-seven, police, eighty-three, parks and recreation, and also marketing and communication. All of those are doing better than what residents expect. If we look at human resources, we can see slightly below what residents expect. And then overall, general questions or general interactions, there's some tax and budget stuff in there which probably caused that to be below expectation, economic development, some questions around shopping and shopping centers and restaurants and the variety that we can get, and then finally, public works, which you will see is that apartment that scored the lowest out of all the departments, and there are some reasons for that. I'm sure you have your own ideas about why that scored lower than some of the other departments. So this is just the reason for the interaction, just to understand what type of interaction they had. So we analyzed it for each of the departments. So for public works, thirty percent had an interaction. That's about two point six interactions on average. And it was water-related, trash pickup issues, quite a lot of comments about the trash and the water. And we understand why, and that's also why we understand why public works didn't score that well. In our previous meeting, we also talked about the context of doing the survey, and it's something that I think we need to keep in mind. I think Paul said if this survey was done during Thanksgiving, we would have seen better scores because everybody is in a different frame of mind. So the time that we collected the data was really when you had the water issues and the trash collection company is new and everybody's still getting used to it. So we understand where some of those lower scores come from. The police department, again, community engagement, non-emergency calls, traffic-related. So these reasons for interactions are ranked from the highest to the lowest. So you will see water-related issues was the issue that they contacted the department most for, followed by trash pickups, street repairs and maintenance. And these three themes is something that came out throughout the survey. Whenever we asked them verbatim feedback, those are the three issues that were mentioned the most. Fire and EMS, medical emergencies, nine-one-one calls, carbon monoxide alarms, false alarms, community outreach. The majority of interactions came from those. Parks and recreation, park passes and rentals, inquiries about activities, community events, maintenance concerns, engagement with the staff were the top reasons why they engaged with parks and recreation. Marketing and communication, this is where the results become a little bit more difficult to interpret. We didn't have a lot of residents that had those type of interactions, so you will see only three percent marketing communication, only one percent talking about information technology. So they had direct communication, news, descriptions, those are the main reasons why they had contacted those department. City manager, seven percent of residents had the interaction. It was about direct communication. Quite a lot of people having coffee with the mayor. It seems like the residents enjoy doing that and engaging on a personal level. Information requests and discussions, specific concerns and complaints, and the city secretary also, not too many interactions with them. Human resources, again, a very small number of residents having a direct interaction and then some of the other services, various inquiries, complaints, animal control matters, communication regarding the street maintenance, the main reasons for interaction. And so next, we asked them, how did you interact with the city? We want to understand what are the most common forms of contacting the city. Fifty percent indicated in person, thirty-four percent by telephone, and only sixteen percent electronically. So it seems like residents like that personal interaction. They want to speak to a person, know that there's something, somebody that's listening to me. And you can see the same trend irrespective of the department that they had interaction. Next, we looked at the different department results. So you can see these are the results for fire and emergency services. So in each of the slides, we show you three things. Those that had a direct interaction, the overall index score, and those that did not have the interaction. So from this slide, you can see that the residents who had a direct interaction with fire and emergency services, their experience and overall satisfaction is much higher than those who did not have an interaction. So these are residents that had an interaction, those are residents that did not. So it's their perception of that apartment. So in this case, we can see that a very high score if they had a direct interaction. So that overall statement is made up out of those two. Fire and emergency services being reliable and effective and a quick response. Those are the individual scores for those two statements. Just on an overall level, if you see results like this, anything above eighty, you can almost see as a distinction. So whenever we see scores that are above eighty, we know that that is a leadership position in this type of area. Those are really high scores, and you seldom get scores that are consistently above eighty index score. Next is police. Again, we see a very high overall satisfaction score when they had a direct interaction compared to only the perception, although those two are still quite pretty high. If we look at the individual statements, police response times, feeling secure, and then police presence during and after traffic behavior, that is the lowest scoring one in terms of the traffic and traffic regulations, but the other two are quite good. Parks and recreation, almost on par with those that didn't have an interaction. And if we look at the right-hand side, the different areas, and we don't have to read through all of them, you can see the highest score for providing clean, safe and well-maintained parks and the lowest score about having a broad range of activities and recreational opportunities. That is something that we saw out of the verbatim as well. The residents quite enjoy the outdoors, going for walks, walking in the parks. So I think it's something that they enjoy and something that they maybe want a little more of compared to some of the others. Acting and communication, again, we see those that had a direct interaction, quite a good overall score. You can see that those scores are in the nineties for having access to information. Communication from the city is clear, timely and accurate, and then being able to conveniently engage with the city. All three of those scores, again, those that had a direct interaction, scoring the city higher than that perception of those that did not have any direct interaction. Human resources, again, a smaller sample over here, so they might be more difficult to interpret. Those that had a direct interaction, seventy-five, compared to those that did not. If you look at the individual statements, Highland Village staff exemplifies a high level of engagement, certainty, immunity, and dealing with residents, staff proficient, act responsibly and takes ownership of requested queries. Public works, so this is where we see the lowest score out of all the different departments that we saw. And if we look at the individual scores, you can see the lowest ones, road infrastructure, easy mobility, efficient traffic flow, that's something that I experienced in my short time over here. There's a lot of cars on the road. I was walking along. There's not a lot of people walking in Island Village. They looked at me in a very strange way when they saw me walking around. And crossing streets and things like that becomes quite difficult because of all the traffic that we see. You can see another one, the cost and efficiency of garbage recycling and waste removal, the one that scored the lowest out of all those statements. So looking at the traffic and the water, water conservation efforts, waste and water services. So you can see these are the areas where we first see scores which are in the sixties. Overall results, so some of the general questions about the city performance, those that had interaction, the scores on a seventy-one. Look on the right-hand side at the different attributes that we measured, the overall performance of the city on a seventy-five, the overall value that you receive for the taxes that you pay on a sixty-eight, the extent to which the city of Island Village is innovative on a sixty-eight as well, and overall, the local government services are well-managed on a seventy-one. But let's look at quality of life. So quality of life, we have, we delve into the emotional aspect. So you can see, we asked them, would you like to consider the quality of life you experience in the emotional well-being while living in Highland Village? Please write the following statements. Feeling safe in Island Village, extremely high score of ninety. Peaceful neighborhood on a eighty-three, well-managed city life on an eighty, recreational well-being on a seventy-nine, and belonging to Island Village on a seventy-six. And these are all extremely high scores. So if we look at the quality of life, yes, residents might complain about the traffic and the water and the waste, but on an overall level, the quality of life that they have in Highland Village, and we will compare this to some of your neighboring towns a bit later, is extremely high. You can see, and that is a reflection of what the city is doing and really working on the quality of life of your residents. Problems and complaints, so that is that section over there. So we asked them that they experienced any of the following, challenges, concerns, problems, and even formal complaints, just to understand the difference between those aspects. Sixty-three percent indicated that they don't have any problems, no complaints, and that's a very good number. We hardly ever see that percentage of residents not having any issue with the city, so that's a great result. A general inquiry, twelve percent, any type of concern, twelve percent. A problem that you experienced, eleven, and then a formal complaint, only two percent. Sometimes you get the formal complaint, so yes, they experienced a problem. Sometimes you get the formal complaint, so yes, they experienced a problem. If it's something real serious, they would have used a formal complaint channel. And we see only a very small percentage of residents that feel this issue is so serious that I formally need to complain about it. If you then just look at those, I think this is the important number, thirteen percent on the right hand side. You can see problems experienced, eleven percent, plus our formal complaints is two percent. So we're on a thirteen percent for what we deem to be serious problems experienced. So leadership level on this metric is ten percent. So a little bit of work needs to be done there, you can still, but a thirteen percent is quite good. In other areas, we see seventeen or nineteen percent of residents having the same sort of issue. So thirteen percent is almost at that level where you can say that you're world-class. So what are the important metrics that we also track over time? Is the percentage of residents that had a formal complaint or problem. So when we asked them about what it was, twenty six percent talked about trash collection, fifty percent traffic control, thirteen percent maintenance, co-reinforcements, so it's about noise and scooters and dogs and all of those type of things. Water quality, eleven percent. Communication from the city and feedback being low or no communication at all on ten percent. The road condition, seven percent, and then construction and developments and new apartments and things like that on six percent. So immediately, we can see that those are the two biggest areas where residents felt that they experienced some sort of issue. These are the verbatims, a new trash picker provider, paying more for less service. Traffic and high rates of speed have become unbearable in the past five years. The water quality is unacceptable. The city roads are abysmal in many places. Co-reinforcements, so residents refer to neighbors not keeping their yards clean, barking dogs, noise caused by construction, youth riding on their scooters. So that is just an extract of some of them.
What's the public pool of people? We don't have a public pool.
I don't know.
Oh, maybe it's black man, or yeah, it could be an H O A pool because we don't have a pool.
Yeah, that's how I interpreted it. I think it's an H O A pool. And I think a lot of residents don't realize that it's not a public pool, you know. Some know because they pay their dues and they know, but some may think that it's a public pool.
Something else I must just mention is quite interesting. Normally, when you ask these type of open-ended questions, whether we do it in a customer setting or for residents, people give short answers, they want to finish the survey and be done with it. Your residents wrote essays. It took us quite a while to go through all the verbatim and understand what they're talking about, and that's a good thing. They're highly engaged, they want to tell you what they think. So whenever you see that engagement in the survey, it really means that they want to share their voice and tell you what they think.
Can you go back one slide real quick? So with regards to the complaints, do we have any information on the demographics that are tied to these complaints?
Yes, we do. We didn't show it, yeah? There's something else that we discussed during the week, and that is to understand. So you will see later on, some of the complaints are resolved, while other complaints are not resolved. So additional analysis that we want to do is look at the complaints that are not resolved. Those might be things that you can't resolve. It might be things that's impossible to resolve for the city. So that's also an important point, we can have a look at that to see the demographic details of the different residents.
I'd also be interested in the age bands with regard to the complaints as well. And this goes back to the one where the elderly couple had issues getting their trash cans up and down the driveway. So perhaps that might be driving some of this as well.
Yeah, that could be. Good suggestion, so we'll do that additional analysis to understand the demographic profile of this and also to understand which of these problems are resolvable.
Can you back up one more slide? I was just looking at the water quality, eleven percent. This was taken when we had the changeover.
Yes.
So I wonder what the percentage overall would be if that eleven percent was out. I think that's resolved.
For now, but if we have it the same time next year, it'll be, you'll get no net difference.
We just won't do the survey.
You gotta schedule the survey when we don't switch over the water.
Sweeten up the water before we have the survey.
Yes, yes, you know, the conditioner did not wash out as well, like you told you.
And I think it's about. It's about residents' frame of mind while they complete the survey and what is top of mind for them when we asked them about this. So those two were top of mind at that stage. I think if we do it now, we'll probably not have any comments.
Once we get this new traffic control in out here, that's number two.
Yes.
Not just that one, but.
So interaction channels, please indicate which channel you use regarding when they complained. Forty five percent by telephone, thirty one percent in person, twenty six email, and then twenty five said some other, the website. So again, we see real the interpersonal contact that they had with the city, whether it's complaining about something or whether it's a general interaction.
I like to see social media being the last because it shows you go to the source and that's how you solve a problem. You don't just complain on Facebook as a keyboard warrior, and that's good to know, our citizens are more engaged.
That's a good point. Then we asked them, so did you get a response? Sixty four percent said yes. Was the response accurate? Forty eight percent said yes. Was it as quick as you expected? Forty nine percent said yes. So these are some of the areas where we can probably improve a bit. You want to, that should really almost be close to a hundred. Whether it's resolved or not, that type of feedback is important. And again, improve a bit on maybe the speed that we do it and was the response accurate? And the reason why these are areas that we can improve on, I will share that with you now. So was it resolved to your expectation? Fifty four percent said no, it wasn't resolved. And that is where we want to understand what the nature of those problems were. Maybe it's something that you can't resolve. On the right hand side, yes, resolved to my expectation and somewhat resolved. So there's fifty four percent of cases where the residents felt that the issue wasn't resolved. And that might be because the water at that stage was not resolved yet, which it might now be. But it's important, this is an important metric and we will share this with you now. So what you see here is those are residents' expectations. That is the overall satisfaction of everybody in the song. So that is on a seventy point. That is the overall satisfaction of residents that had a problem and it was not resolved. So just going back to the previous slide, that fifty four percent of residents that had an issue and it was not resolved, their overall satisfaction is on a fifty five. Those residents that said it was partly resolved, their satisfaction is on a seventy. Those who said it was resolved to my satisfaction, their overall satisfaction is on an eighty one. So those residents that had a problem and it was resolved to their satisfaction, their overall satisfaction score is higher than those residents that didn't even have an issue. So it really shows you the importance of trying to resolve issues. You can take a disgruntled resident that experienced something bad and you can turn them into a promoter for the city and someone that is much happier than those that didn't even had an issue in the first place. So that is why it's important, I think it's, in many instances, just sharing these results with the rest of the employees and that they understand how important it is to resolve an issue. It's called having a customer-centric culture within the organization. So if all the staff understands that it really gives you an opportunity to take a disgruntled resident and turn them into somebody that is extremely happy about the city, then you can start instilling that culture of, let's try and resolve the issues because it's going to be to the benefit of the city and all the residents. So just to show that there's a real increase in satisfaction depending on how well you resolve the issues. Overall satisfaction and loyalty, so let's look at perceived living value and overall satisfaction. We don't have to, these are just overall metrics. Overall satisfaction on a sixty nine, service quality sixty six, comparison to the ideal, sixty eight. So we asked them, how well does Island Village compare to the ideal? That is a very high score for a question like this. And sometimes we get scores that are in the fifties for that type of metric. So again, like we explained, there's two groups of residents, like we explained in the beginning, those that where they have high expectations and the city is falling short of that and where the satisfaction is below expectations and that group where they are satisfied and their expectations are met. This just shows the difference in the gap between satisfaction and the expectation level. And again, that is where we see the biggest gap between those residents that have a very high expectation. And typically, these residents with a low satisfaction score are those that had an issue and it was not resolved. And that creates that big gap between their expectations and the satisfaction.
Can you go back a couple of slides? One more. One more. One more.
It's more than a copy.
Right here. No, I was just looking at perceived living value and it's the rate of local government taxes and taxes you pay for Island Village. How do you segment out taxes paid for county and school?
Yeah, that's true.
Because our taxes, city-wise, are the lowest of the tax bill.
Yeah, that's a very good point because it's the school districts that really take the most. And our appraisals are awesome, they're great too, but this came out before we got our appraisals.
I think that is something that we can specify when we do the measure again, just to look at that difference. I think residents might not understand the difference and they just think about the overall taxes that they pay.
Which we know they do and, you know, to see the perceived living values are so low and also since we need to do more to explain where the taxes are, we've done it several times. But it means we just gotta keep feeding them.
Yeah, because in Texas, like a lot of places, the city or the county is the school and is the this and is the everything. But in Texas, we all have our own little kingdom. So you get different services of different things of living in community, but the city's only responsible for a little piece of it. And so it's not like, and I think most of the country, all your stuff comes from the same place. And here, we like to be different, so we feel like change it up a little bit. So it would be nice to know where they think those perceived things are coming from, if it's city, county or school.
So if you look at the verbatim, the percentage of residents that complain about the taxes is pretty small. Really, so I don't even think it's something that's on the radar of most of the residents.
That's totally different from the question of your expectation of the local government and the taxes you pay for their services. This is the way that would be.
Yeah.
Yes.
Right. So to his point, if we break out what the city, what you pay for in city taxes and the value you get for those city taxes. It's a totally different concept from overall.
No, I think that's a good improvement we can make just to make sure that residents understand that and we also can.
And one of our biggest traffic issues, the city can do nothing about. We can't touch it, it's state.
Thanks for bringing that up.
Yeah, we can't, so we can complain all day long, we can come up with the best everything and state can go, yeah, no. And I don't think, I think that's a, I avoid the intersection, I don't know about y'all, but, I mean, we can't, there's some things the city can't, we don't have jurisdiction over.
I think it's an important point that, I think regularly communicating with residents, the differences between that and that there's some things that the city can't do anything about, that's quite important. Because remember, that is going to influence their expectation of what can happen. So the moment they understand, well, this can't be done, they won't have an expectation that it's going to happen and everything is driven from their expectations, so.
But we could empower residents on our websites and such on, this is the entity that handles this, this is how you get involved with this entity. And if it is a thing and it is citizen-driven, their voices mean a lot. And some of the things, we're not saying no, it's just, this is the people you gotta go to. And it might be something to look at to expand our website or something to show, hey, these are the people that are responsible for X, Y and Z and send them those resources to make it more empowering.
I think it's a good idea. So not meeting expectations, so this is where we asked them, describe where the city of Island Village is not meeting your expectations. Road repairs, traffic, garbage collection, maintenance, communication from the city, code enforcement. And these are small percentages, so really looking at, and this is why we now understand that they feel that some of their expectations are not met because of those issues. This is some of the verbatim's. Roads, oh my lord, Island Village needs to be fixed. You can see some of them are quite emotional about that. Way too much speeding, the switch to Republic was not handled well. Residents referred to better maintain sidewalks, cleaning of drains, overhead wiring, phone cables.
And that gets us to, we have no jurisdiction over franchise utilities. That's, I mean, that's great, but we don't, that's not in our scope, I mean, they get a lovely fee on their bill that should cover that. That's what I'm saying, like wiring, phone and cable is not.
But this is a good point that we need to be aware of. But this empowers us to go to the cable companies and say, you need to do your job.
Absolutely, it does.
It's a good indicator for us.
It is.
Would it be possible from a traffic perspective to separate out simply twenty four ninety nine and four oh seven in every place else? Because that'll give us an indication.
Yes.
Are they concerned more about what text on handles versus what we can handle?
We can do that, yes. Changes and improvements, so we asked them, so what can the city improve on? Twenty six percent said nothing, you're doing a great job, they can't think of anything that you can improve. So that is also doing. Yeah, roads and sidewalks, traffic, more entertainment. That is something that was quite surprising to me. So while we were here, we did some of this verbatim analysis. I've never seen so many restaurants and shops in my life, they want more. They are really hard to please, they really have very high expectations. And we have to see that in concrete.
You gotta understand too, Dallas, we don't have a natural feature like mountains or ocean or whatever. So Dallas has grown on shopping, I mean, the history of Dallas is shopping and eating. Neiman Marcus, Restaurant Row, I mean, that's, the Dallas is shopping.
You're right, yeah. I just maybe, just if you go back, so one of the things, so again, we see the greater variety of shops. Nature trails, expansion, again, they like to be outdoors, they like the trails, they would like to see more of those. Utilities, rental and apartments, so some of them complain about rental apartments that's in the city. And they don't want too many of those. Ease visibility, budget and taxes, so you can see only three percent of residents, when we asked them what can be improved, talked about the taxes.
As a rental, is there any differentiation between short-term and long-term rentals?
Right.
Not that I can recall, you can have a closer look, although it is still a small.
And they say rentals.
Yeah, it's a small percentage of Dallas.
Yeah, was it rental versus rentals or is it apartments now and in potential future?
So both of those, so some residents talked about the new apartments that the city wants to build and others talked about rental properties that are rented out to be. And others talked about rental properties that are rented out to people. Which then think was an unsavory aspect to the neighborhood.
Yeah, that was the short-term rentals.
That's the short-term rentals.
Yes. I would, those are my terms.
I I don't think the city is for or against the apartments, that that's a just going on record. We can't, we can't promote anything.
Um, so what has been your most positive experience in Highland Village? Safety came out as number one, thirty percent of residents say that they feel safe. Outdoor activities, police, emergency services, fire department, government staff and services that they get from the city, community, and the small-town feel. And I think this is something that's important and also that they feel is a lot of traffic and a lot of buildings and more people is taking away a bit of that small-town feel that they have. Neighbors, people and good friends, the quality of life, peaceful, family-centered, children in schools, the cleanliness, entertainment events and shopping, so although they want more of that, you can see there's other things that are more important to them. To some of the verbatim's, we will make this available and you can have a look at that. Then we move into loyalty, so we have different loyalty constructs that we measure the likelihood of staying in Highland Village on an eighty-nine out of a hundred, which is extremely high, likely to support local businesses, likely to recommend Highland Village to friends and colleagues and family, likely to join community events, the likelihood to engage with city social media, and the likelihood to participate in local governance. So extremely loyal, very high scores on on all of these indexes that we measure. Finally, net promoter score, so that is the likelihood to recommend, so this is a metric that that many organizations and many resident satisfaction surveys measure, so just to explain to you how it works, it's a it's a scale out of ten. Everybody that says not likely at all, from zero to six are labeled as a detractor. Anybody that scores a seven and eight are seen as passes, and everybody that scored a nine or a ten on that question is seen as promoters. And the way that the net promoter score is calculated is you take the percentage of promoters, you subtract the percentage of detractors, and then you get your NPS, so in your case, eleven percent of residents indicated a low likelihood. Seventy-two percent indicated a a high likelihood, so seen as promoters, that in itself is is a great result. Seventy-two percent of your residents scoring a nine or a ten on the question, will you recommend Highland Village? And so in the end, you have an NPS of sixty-one percent, and that is extremely good score. You can see we compared it to some of your neighbors. Um, city of Capel, NPS of seventy forty-seven, you're on a sixty-one. Town of Flowermount, forty-seven, compared to your sixty-one. Likely to stay in Flowermount on an eighty-eight, Highland Village on an eighty-nine. Uh, Keller, forty-one, NPS. Louisville, sixty-six, sixty-six, so doing on on perceived living values, so not on NPS. And on a NPS, thirty-six, compared to your sixty-one.
Why did you pick Louisville with over a hundred thousand people or the perceived living value index score to compare us to instead of something similar like a Coranthor?
So some of these are not publicly available.
Oh, okay, so you just go what you can find, okay.
We just took those that that we could find, yeah, just to give you a bit of comparison. So you can see on on all of these comparisons, if you look at Highland Village sixty-one NPS compared to all of these, you can see that you score better than any of these other cities on that metric. So that's a great result. Just in terms of conclusions and recommendations, um, so just recapping, very high expectations, we don't have to go into the detail. The apartments doing extremely good, also specifically the police and the fire. Problems and complaints on a thirteen percent, we would like to see if we can get that ten percent or below. And and really, the way that you deal with this, those complaints is really more important than the percentage of complaints. It's it's how you deal with them, that is, that's the most.
Speaking of the complaints, in your, in your slide, you, I think you said fifty-one percent were, uh, of the complaints were resolved to their satisfaction. Roughly fifty-one percent were not completed to their expectation. It appears to me that that is a little subjective, what is their expectation and can it be solved by the city, right?
Exactly.
How do we know, how can we improve on that metric to get it more defined? For us to see what we can do, what's in our power, to to create this better score.
Exactly, so so that is the additional analysis that we want to do. We look at those problems that the residents said were not resolved to their satisfaction and understand the nature of those problems and whether it can even be resolved.
And it goes back to the other issue of timing.
Yes.
That could have changed dramatically with the with the time.
And sometimes it's just about providing the feedback in a way that they can understand that this is something that we can't resolve. We don't have any power over this, so in that feedback, immediately it impacts their expectation. Because they expect A, the moment they understand that you can't deliver A, it's out of your control, it creates a different expectation from residents, so that is the additional analysis that we want.
Yeah, I've, the why and the how go the wrong way. And people, if they know how, the why and the how, it 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 gets them to see the other side.
Yeah, like we said, it creates an opportunity for you to communicate with residents and explain to them the situation, making them understand why it sometimes can't be resolved. Lastly, um, continue focusing on your strength, um, maintain a high performance of the police and fire and emergency services. Enhance the direct interactions with residents, further develop the quality of life amenities such as parks, trails, and restaurants. Make it the strong role loyalty, residents feel towards the city, so something that you can use is these residents that are highly loyal to us, Highland Village. Cost-effective measures, so almost when you look at initiatives, there's always a cost component to anything that you're going to implement. So sometimes you need to look at what is it going to cost the city to improve on this aspect? What are, what is the bang for our buck that we're going to get when we have certain initiatives? So that is something that you should look carefully at.
Excuse me just a minute, um, regarding the cost-effective measures, and I think this goes to Lori. When there's an issue that comes into the city, wouldn't it be very cost-effective to provide an immediate response to that citizen through social media, through email, to get their feedback so that we can measure it live, essentially?
Yes, yes, I agree, I agree, so we we work hard to, if we get a question from a resident, to respond in a quick manner. So whatever measure or channel they use to communicate with us, we we want to be able to respond quickly.
Do we currently reach out for a follow-up after it's resolved to get that feedback? And that's what I'm getting at, you you're looking at an effective cost measure, I think we've already got it in place. To me, it's a process that we can incorporate that's very quick and readily available and it's live. It's, it hits them when the emotion's strong, and they're more likely to respond in that context, I believe.
A lot of cities have that, um, the city staff and counties and all, um, they have, you know, they have a little link at the bottom, anytime they respond, you go fill out a survey.
It's something for us to think about that we can incorporate in turn.
Our Eye on Highland Village app has that.
I see, I was, yeah.
So when they submit something, it's a response, then there's a survey link.
An automatic, an automatic follow-up response.
And I don't know, did this measure how many people use the app and here, we might want to take that survey link or whatever and extend it to emails and messages and stuff like that as well, because, I mean, I know my my side of the neighborhood, a lot of the the people, the senior citizens, they're not using that. I mean, they're not using that app.
And there's, there's a lot of different communication channels that people could use to reach out to us about an issue. Like you said, there's things on the bottom of a website, well, how many people are actually going to go to our website? If they have an issue or concern, they're going to call, perhaps, because we see that a lot of people do call us. Um, there's some where you can text your issue, how many are really going to use the text notification or the text app to to send that to you? So there's a lot of different options, um, and just looking for the way that would be best for our residents, I think is something that we need to consider. Um, and then also the fact that a lot of people like to have that personal interaction. So if we want to look at really enhancing the customer service that we provide and going through some training with our own staff on customer service and how we can respond, that may be a good way for us to go also.
Yeah, that is one thing we're looking to do, and after, um, after Cobus and Reese made the presentation at the directors on Monday, and we talked about some of the ways we could improve, and I think it's all going to touch on some of these things, we don't really have any control over it, so that is an education process for some things. But the other is to make sure we are doing the best job possible to respond. Um, and we have our frontline people that answer the phone, I I hear Karen and Jenny all the time. And and Lori and Angie, when they take calls too, they do great, uh, Kim Huntley is amazing. We have a lot of great people, but we we do want to go through some more training to make sure everybody's really really kind of living up to our mission to make sure we're providing that high-level service, that we are responding quickly to take care of that, to at least address that part of it. And I I think the follow-up, that is good, uh, it really is, and and I do know too, particularly, well, either with garbage or water, I know the people that Scott was able to talk to on the phone or we were able to talk to on the phone, you're able to create an understanding. I got a call from one lady during the the water thing, and she said, I know you guys aren't trying to poison me, can you please explain this to them? And so I had a great opportunity to explain it, and and it it was fine, so it is good that we get a lot of calls, and so we can do that. But we will look at doing some training to make sure we're doing our best, particularly the, you know, the number of non-response. We want to make sure that's one word, no matter what, even if it's an answer you don't like, to make sure we give you an answer.
So, one thing with regards to emails, when you were looking at a no response, was it an email to a department? Because I know from a city council perspective, we get emails that we might not always respond to. So is it, was it, I mean, how how are we determining which emails were not being responded to?
Uh, we didn't capture that, we we can have, look and see the not getting a response, how many inter-interacted via email and understand the percentage of that, but we did not specifically ask.
Yeah, exactly, I always have an issue with that, because I mean, I can email anybody, I might get a response, I might not, right? But if I email like a a monitored mailbox for public works, I would expect to get a response back, right? I think it's just things like that that we might want to take a look at, see how that skewed the numbers.
I think it's something that we could, as a council, we should set up a protocol that when we get a message to council, that we know that someone's going to close the loop, so that we're not all sitting there thinking, well, did the mayor send an answer back? Or sometimes I will send an answer, but I won't copy everyone, but we should have a protocol that says those emails get clicked somehow. And then one other request, I would love to see how many Eye on Highland Village requests come in, because it's a great tool. And it's, we know that it gets response, I mean, I use it a lot, okay, um, it's one of the most effective ways to reach the city.
Yeah, we can look at the statistics for, just from the Eye on Highland Village app itself, the statistics that we get from that and share it with council.
Okay, great.
Also, just just on an overall level, I I think you did great in the survey, considering the expectations that residents have. These are fantastic results, and with one or two initiatives that don't necessarily have to cost a lot of money, you can really make some great improvements. Yeah, great results, thank you for the activity.
Thank you.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Another thing I just wanted to add with the New Way Insight team, and this is what they did with the retail and restaurant survey also, is they provided us a pivot tool, um, that has all of the verbatims, it has everything in the survey, and we're able to then go through that and sort it, and look, okay, if we want to find out, we had a high percentage of over sixty responding, what were they responding in response to, what were their questions that they, and where part of the city were these responses from that dealt with this? So it really is a very robust tool that they offer us.
Is this a tool that council can look into, look at, I mean, can we see the same data?
Um, sure, yeah.
So it just allows you to look at the data from different angles and from different viewpoints and.
Yeah, we haven't actually received it yet. But but, I mean, we're just getting to the preliminary presentation here, and then I think Jacob said this 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 week.
In the next week, yes.
This next week or so, that we would have that that detailed.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Very informative. Okay, so we're going to move on to number two, discuss the election of Mayor Pro Tem and Deputy Mayor Pro Tem. Happens every year. So, um, again, we're going to discuss, um, Mayor Pro Tem and Deputy Mayor Pro Tem. I believe that, um, John, you are, have been the Mayor Pro Tem.
Last year.
I was the deputy mayor, but I think Angie, you've got, there is a history that was provided in your packets and you provided our topics today as well. We didn't go back to the beginning of time, but we went back from two thousand and ten forward to kind of give you guys the histories of the history.
I would say from my standpoint, I'm I'm happy to continue serving in the same role that the people are in agreement. And I would, I would like to see John stay in that role as well.
I'm happy to do it.
Um, I, Robert did reach out to me and, um, said kind of the same thing, that he supports John staying in that role and you being, and if you were agreeable. I'm going to need the support of all of you, so it doesn't really, anybody that worked with me before knows I I don't, not really gone a lot. I try to attend all the meetings, but it's always good to have support. Anyway, so we'll take that up in the, obviously, council meeting if ever please, if anybody else have anything. Discuss nominating one candidate to a slate of nominees for Dino Area nine-one-one District Board of Managers, Angie.
So, Dino Area nine-one-one District Board of Managers have two members that are appointed by all of the participating municipalities located within Dinfo's district. So each year on September thirtieth, the term for one of those two members expires. And then during the month of May, the district will accept nominations for candidates to represent the municipalities. So our currently serving rep, Mr. Jim Carter, his term expires this year. He has expressed a desire to serve another term. So this agenda item provides an opportunity for council discussion. Council can choose to nominate Mr. Carter or to nominate another candidate. Historically, board members have been current or former elected officials in the district, however, there are no prerequisites. So, um, if council is aware of anyone that we'd, that we'd like to consider, please have them contact me so I can get their information. But then council also has an option to just not participate in the nomination process. If council chooses not to nominate anyone this year, uh, you'll still have an opportunity to vote. Dinfo staff will provide a slate of nominees that was submitted by all the participating municipalities, and council will have an opportunity to vote on that later this year, so that'll be a little later in the summer though.
And the nominees have to be, your resumes have to be in by, when do we?
The resumes or the nomination?
Well, when do we, when do we have to make that?
We have until the end of this month to nominate, so we could do that at the next meeting if council would like to to do that. I just wasn't sure if council wants to look at Jim Carter again, I've provided a copy of his resume. I didn't know if it was something that council wanted to nominate someone else, and this gives us a little bit of time to look at that, if you have anybody that you think might be interested, um, please have them contact me so I can get their information and resume and such.
Has anyone expressed an interest to you?
No, and this is kind of a unique board in that, you know, there's a couple of boards that council does appointments and nominations. This is one of those, so it's not like our typical city boards that we do a large call for applications. But rather, I turned to council to see if there's anyone that you know of that might be. that might be of service on that board. It might be helpful to have somebody that's got a background, at least maybe with some, the workings of cities, maybe dispatch or public safety in some form. I think that would be very helpful with those.
My thought process goes to the police and fire department, who utilizes the services most, obviously. Is it, is that something we can do is reach out to both of them and see if they know of anyone, if anybody has ever reached out to police or fire departments for an interest in that?
We can check on that. Typically, if they did, they would probably.
Like you said, this is not something that publicly knows they can go and do.
Right, that's what I was like, this is, I mean, people, we knew this is available. I mean, you don't know what to apply for if you don't know what there is.
I think you would have somebody volunteer that's interested.
Yeah.
I think that's going to come from the police and fire departments. Do you ever get, hear of any interest in this?
I'm on the board to represent the Department of Parks and State County.
And this person represents us as Highland Village?
Municipalities.
Municipalities in general, okay, okay.
Yeah. So at the end of the process, of the nomination process, all of the cities that nominate those candidates, I guess, that slate of candidates is presented back to the councils of those towns and municipalities, cities, whatever, to vote. So there, there hasn't been a lot of change on the board, on that board, of those two members in a while. It's not to say that's good or bad, but this is kind of, we're needing some direction from council. I wish to proceed with this.
So if you know of somebody that you think that would be good, have them reach out to Angie, let Angie give them the qualifications or the requirements to get their information, resume and like that, their background information. You will discuss it against the next meeting, I think. And again, like you said, we don't have to nominate.
No, you do not.
We do get the vote.
You will still get to vote even if you don't nominate, yes. Okay.
Ready to go with that? We're going to move on. Certification, consent or action items on today's council meeting agenda. Clarifications, any questions or clarifications needed? Okay, we're going to move on. I like this. I need a nod or something, so I know to move on. We're not going to be meeting unless, I mean, the reason, the meeting is closed session, we're not meeting in closed session. So, if that's, anybody has any questions, any clarifications, then you know what?
Oh wait, I have a question. Okay. On, hold on. On the concrete road repairs, are we, how are we notifying everybody on that? That's my only clarification. I mean, I know they get it all, but just seems to be a sensitive subject. Are we getting the mailers? Are we going to do the QR code, the map?
They'll get mailers with a, if they're affected, they'll get a mailer with a QR.
And then are we going to have, how's it coming with the like, the website showing all the stuff we do? Like traffic, repairs, so people can click and go and see and do?
As far as having an up-to-date schedule information, yeah. The next round of projects, we'll, we'll have that on there. If you go to it now, I guess Scott, it takes on, it takes you to the list of projects.
Right.
Those that have been completed, those that are scheduled.
Right, we've provided Laurie with information. As updated as possible and she's, she puts it on there.
Yeah, I mean, it's a great way to harness RGIS. Like a lot of cities have, they just little things and just click on it and they can, it's a layer.
Yep.
For construction.
There's a confirmation on that. It's a great.
We'll give you QR.
Yeah, right, that's a great tool.
I tried it too.
You did? Just so everybody knows. Okay, all right, anything else? All right, well then we are adjourned at 7:09.
See, he was trying to tell you, hold it.
Give me some grace here. It's kind of, oh, sorry. Okay, good evening. Welcome to the Highland Village City Council meeting. Today is May 14, 2024, and it is now 7:30 PM. Let the record show that all council members are present with the exception of Councilman Feaster. So we are going to get started. Councilman Cox is going to lead us in prayer and the pledges.
Please vouch your heads. Heavenly Father, we come to you tonight thankful for the opportunity to gather in this place to represent our city and our residents. We ask that you give us the wisdom to make the best decisions for the items brought before us tonight. I pray for our city staff, our first responders, and our military, domestic and abroad. Lord, we are nothing without you, and I pray that you use us as vessels to represent your glory. Watch over us, protect us, and guide us in all your ways. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Thank you. Please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
Thank you. So a few things have changed. One of them is this. Wow, I can see. Okay, so we are now going to do the ceremonial oaths for newly elected city council members. And I guess that, take those off so I can see you. I guess that would include myself and you, Mr. Kixmiller. Let's go down and and do this. Who's going first?
I've invited my grandson Keller and my son Ben to administer the oath. And Keller's holding a Bible that my father carried in World War II.
Wow.
I, John Kixmiller, do solemnly swear.
I, John Kixmiller, do solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully execute the duties of the office of Highland Village.
That I will faithfully execute the duties of the office of Highland Village.
Place two in the state of Texas.
Place two in the state of Texas.
And will, to the best of my ability, preserve.
And to the best of my ability, will preserve.
Protect and defend the Constitution.
Protect and defend the Constitution.
And the laws of the United States.
And the laws of the United States. And the states. So help me God. Thank you. Thank you.
You want one more? Deb? How cute he is. Oh, my gosh. Mr. Wilcox?
Yes.
You get over there. You should have over there. It's backwards.
Backwards?
Yes.
I, Charlotte Wilcox, do solemnly swear.
Oh, I, Charlotte Wilcox, do solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully execute the duties of the office of Highland Village.
That I will faithfully execute the duties of the office of Highland Village.
City council, place one mayor.
City council, place one mayor.
Of the state of Texas.
The state of Texas.
And will do the best of my ability, preserve.
Will do the best of my ability to preserve.
Protect.
Protect.
And defend the Constitution.
And defend the Constitution.
And the laws of the United States.
And the laws of the United States.
So help me God.
And of this state, so help me God. I've done this a few times. I know, you would think I'd have that memorized by now.
Me too.
Really? That's perfect. Thank you. Thanks. You can go now, you don't have to. I was telling them that our grandchildren have moved to Colorado, so they weren't here to do it. I'm looking for an adopted grandchild. Keller, are you available? I need to spend some time. All right. Congratulations, sir.
Congratulations to you, Mayor.
Thank you. All right. And let me just say how honored I am to be able to serve as mayor to the residents, the businesses, to serve with these awesome council members. Mayor Jaworski left big shoes that will be filled, need to be filled, and I will do my best to try to do that. So we are going to move on. Number 10 on the agenda is selection of Mayor Protem and Deputy Mayor Protem. We discussed this early, and does anybody have a motion? Do I have a motion? Anybody? Anybody?
I'll make a motion.
Thank you.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion for Mayor Protem stays the same. Is that good? Stay the same with John Kixmiller as Mayor Protem and Brian Urinza as Deputy Mayor Protem.
Okay, so we have a motion, council. Do I have a second? Thank you, sir. We have a motion and a second. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. And any opposed? Okay, so it carries 6-0. I almost said 7-0, but we're missing 6-0. Thank you. We're going to move on now to Mayor and Council reports on items of community interest pursuant to Texas Government Code Section 551.0415. City council may report on the following items: expression of thanks, congratulations or condolences, information about holiday schedules, recognition of individuals, reminders of upcoming city council events, information about community events, and announcements involving imminent threat to public health and safety. Do we have any reports? Mr. Councilman Nelson?
Yeah, I got a couple of things I would like to bring up. Number one, I would like to thank Corporal Leggett and Officer Foskey for organizing the successful torch run supporting Special Olympics of Texas this past Saturday. There was a great turnout from many of our local law enforcement agencies, and we are definitely looking forward to the events in the near future supporting such a great cause. Number two, I'd like to thank Corporal Harney for supporting two local Marcus students and their Lego drive. They have teamed up with DFW Angels and are collecting used or new Lego sets to donate to local children in foster care. So if you look in the rotunda, there's going to be a box underneath the police dispatch window where they are collecting new and used Lego sets for these foster children.
All right. Thank you. Anybody else? So I think I would also like to just add on to one of the things that you said about, I believe your wife is modeling a T-shirt that can be, which one do you want to stand? It is the Special Olympics T-shirt, the torch, and it can be purchased, I think. Is that, am I correct?
Yep, I think they're $25 a shirt.
$25 a shirt?
And they can be purchased online.
And they can be purchased online?
The website?
Good question. We can, do you know?
We will find out.
We'll find out.
Okay. And we'll share that information. And also, I would like to say, just to remind everybody that May the 9th through the 18th is National Police Officers Week, and thank our police officers for everything that they do. They serve and protect all of us, and so they are so appreciative, and we value all of you. I know they're not, I'm looking out the back door, I can see a couple back there, but I want them to know how much we appreciate them for all they did for us. So, anybody else? Okay, we're going to do city manager and staff reports.
Mayor, I've got a couple of items, and then I've asked Scott to give us an update on the traffic signal. And Scott, if you wouldn't mind as well, the Highland Shores Asphalt Overlay Project. Give us the status on that. Yeah, go ahead.
Thank you, Paul. Mayor, council, the Highland Village Road, Highland Shores Boulevard, Brazos Signal Project is well underway. We have installed most of the infrastructure. Today, the coserve group came out and energized the new tee pole. The control cabinet was relocated to its new position, and we were going to energize the new signal. However, the contractor, the general contractor, forgot to bring the controller. So, the controller is coming next week. Once the controller gets installed, it will be transferred over to the new signal. It will be maintained on a timing phase, just like the old signal. The old signal will be wrecked, and then the subcontractor that is going to install the camera system that links it to the Louisville Traffic Control folks will come out within the next several, two weeks probably, is what they're telling us to install that. Clean up, demobilization, and we have ourselves a new traffic signal. The Highland Shores Asphalt Overlay Project was coupled with the Community Center Crosswalk Project. The crosswalk has been installed with the exception of the crossing enhancement strobe. The submittal is under review for that. Last week, they paved the asphalt section from Briar Hill to Highland Village Road. I saw today they have installed the pre-striping marks for the new striping plan, which will provide a seven-foot bike lane, a safety zone, and then I believe it's an 11-foot traffic lane, which is one of our goals for traffic calming throughout the area. Any questions?
They did, I just want to make a comment, it's my question. They did a fabulous job on that road. I think I called you after I drove on it the first time, and they did a great job. So.
Thank you.
Yeah, they really did. I have a question, and you will be the one that will be able to answer it. I received a phone call, and just an update, we just need to share a question about the construction on 407 and Briar Hill. I know that that is not city of Highland Village, obviously, but people are wondering why there's still construction stuff right there on that corner. Can you share that, and then we can share it maybe?
What that is, I've taken a phone call or two as well on that. What that is, is we've received a permit from Spectrum Communications Company to install a new line from their infrastructure into public right-of-way into the Bowery. I want to keep calling it the district, but it's the Bowery. However, we've reviewed it, we've had to kick it back a couple of times because there's easement restrictions in the Bowery. They are also seeking a permit, a crossing permit, from TexDOT to cross Farm and Market 407, which the city has no influence on whatsoever. However, we did recommend that Spectrum take a look at their infrastructure to the north because TexDOT is balking at providing them with a crossing permit because it has to be so deep, it has to be in a bore casing, which is not cheap. And communications companies like to do stuff on the cheap, cost-effective, if that's a better word. So I believe their engineers are taking a look at that. What folks are seeing is the traffic control of the contractor that's been hired. There's really nothing the city can do about it. We don't have influence over TexDOT, which is a state. We don't have influence over the communication companies, the franchise utility companies. You know, they're all regulated by the state. So I apologize for their traffic control that's been in the area for long, but there's really nothing the city can do.
Okay. Thank you. I appreciate that. Oh, did you have anything?
Yeah, thank you, Scott. Yeah, I just have two announcements quickly, Mayor. First, this Saturday, from 8:00 to 10:00 AM, there's a volunteer day at Wichita Forest to help clean up brush and debris from the existing trail system. This is the first phase of renovations that will take place at Wichita Forest, which is an environmentally sensitive area that showcases Highland Village Wildlife and nature trails. And if you'd like to participate, you can sign up at hvparks.com. Also, Camp Highland Village is returning to Doubletree Ranch Park this summer. That begins on June 3rd, and you can also find details and you can register at hvparks.com. And that's all I have, and we do have a village report as well.
Dogs can be everyone's best friend, at least if they come to Zoom Room Experience here in Highland Village. I'm Taylor with Experience Highland Village, and I'm with Don Parker. Welcome, Don. You're the franchise owner of Zoom Room here in Highland Village.
Hi, Taylor. I am so honored to have you here and to share Zoom Room with everybody in our community.
Well, tell us about the Zoom Room Experience for dogs.
Zoom Room is, has nothing to do with computers. It's all about when our dogs get the zoomies. So Zoom Room is an indoor dog training experience.
What are the types of experiences that dogs can try out here in Zoom Room?
So here at the Zoom Room, we focus a lot on building that relationship with your dog. So we are going to offer you obedience classes that start as young as eight weeks. We have advanced obedience classes. We have agility here. While we're not huge, like a typical agility competition ring, we certainly have the ability to work with all of the equipment and to get those foundations. to work with all of the equipment and to get those foundational skills. So there's always something new going on here, and we're bringing in more almost every month.
Well, that sounds like a ton of fun. Are there any age restrictions or size restrictions to come to Zoom Room?
So Zoom Room is unique in that we can start with our youngest babies at eight weeks. We use veterinary hospital sanitizer to make sure everything stays spick and span and safe for those under-vaccinated babies. And as far as the size, we have everything in here from Chihuahuas and Pomeranians all the way up to Great Danes and Conde Corso's, and everything in between.
What was it about Highland Village that made it attractive for this location?
Well, for starters, I live here, and I wanted something in our own community. I had been driving to the Trophy Club location. My husband and I discussed it, and we found some great location here in Highland Village, and we're loving every minute of it.
Is there a capacity to the Zoom Room Experience, or could we bring in five or 10 pets?
So in our classes, we're going to keep those a little bit smaller. We're going to keep them at about six, so that you still get that personal attention. But we have the ability to rent out our facility for a two-hour party, and that allows you to bring up to 15 dogs into the facility.
Is there any guidance or a tip that you could give a dog owner, maybe that would help them train their dog at home?
I think the biggest tip I can offer is working on the relationship, right? These are little beings with their own thoughts and feelings. Our trainers come from a variety of backgrounds. They have everything from already coming to us with external certifications, then everyone goes through our own proprietary training program. So we have, our trainers are constantly out there enjoying their own dogs as well as enjoying, helping you better understand yours.
Thank you so much. I'm Taylor with Experience Highland Village here at Zoom Room. Most of the time, it's the dog that gets the treat, but I think we in Highland Village get a treat because we have got this phenomenal place where we can bring our pets and learn to love and build a better relationship with them. I'm Taylor with Experience Highland Village. We'll see you next time.
Guess that's all. Thank you very much. I just want, if you're holding an agenda, I don't want you to think that I forgot something, but the swearing-in of our police officer is going to take place at the next meeting and not at this one, so if you looked at that and saw, oh, she really is a newbie. It's not true. All right, we're going to do visitor comments next. Ms. Miller, do we have any visitor comments? Okay, and then we're just going to move on. We don't have anybody who wants to do that. We're going to do the consent agenda. All of the items on the consent agenda are considered for approval by a single motion and vote without discussion. Each council member has the option of removing an item from this agenda, so it may be considered separately and/or adding any item from the action agenda to be considered as part of the consent agenda items. Consent agenda items are, number 14, consider approval of minutes of the regular city council meeting held on April 23rd, 2024. Consider Resolution 2024-3121 authorizing task orders with SAZ infrastructure for concrete pavement repairs. Number 16, receive investment report for quarter ending March 31st, 2024. Seventeen, receive budget reports for period ending March 31st, 2024. Counsel, does anyone wish to move this off of consent? Okay, would anybody like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion. I'd like to make a motion that we approve consent agenda items 14, 15, 16, and 17 as read.
Thank you, Councilman. And second, Councilman Fiorenza? All right, vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Carry 6-0. All right, and then, action agenda, we did not meet in closed session. So, we're going to do number 19. Consider Ordinance 2024-1312, Amending the Code of Ordinances, Chapter 22, Utilities, Article 22 dot 10, Water Division 2, Water Conservation Drought Contingency Plan, Section 22 dot 10 dot 031, Adoption by Amending the City's Water Conservation and Drought Contingency Plan to Update Historical Water Use Information and Amend Conservation Goals Related to Implementation of the Various Phases of Water Conservation Measures. This is the first of two reads. Mr. Kristen?
Thank you, Mayor, Council. This is an administrative item that we do every five years. TCQ mandates that municipalities submit a water conservation drought contingency plan every five years, and this is the fifth year. In 2019 was the last adopting of the plan. So the Water Conservation Drought Contingency Plan is a comprehensive set of strategies and regulations on the delivery and consumption of water to conserve the available water supply and protect the integrity of the water supply infrastructure, particularly facilities that are critical for domestic water supply, sanitation, fire protection, and to protect and preserve public health, welfare, and safety. The intent of the plan is to minimize emergency conditions of our water supply as we move forward into the hotter months of the year. We used to modify the plan pretty regularly, all the way back dating in 2002, which was the first adoption. And then, as we move forward, we've settled in to a nice plan that everybody is used to and can adhere to. In 2019, all we did was keep the same plan, the same strategies, and just modified the tables that are required with updating the data. So, not to break a wheel that's not broke. And this submittal for council, the 2024 plan, we did the same thing. It's the same plan that's been in place for, you know, 10 years. All we did was update the tables in the plan with the 2019 to 2023 data. We did put the plan out to the public. Lori and I got together, our communication folks, and we did put it out for any residential comments on the plan. We did get one from Councilwoman Hurst. She wanted to know what the changes were. Of course, there's no changes other than the data. And I did get one email over the past several weeks, and it was regarding, it was a resident that wanted to provide an incentive payment for rain and freeze sensors. Rain and freeze sensors have been in our landscape management ordinance, which was approved in 2007, so it's kind of hard to do an incentive that's already in ordinance form, so I had to, I had to respond to that with that information. And that's all the comments I received from the public. I'll take any questions.
Counselors, anybody have any?
I do, if you don't mind. When I read through it, the, it requires you to give updates and make minor changes, essentially, unless there's something drastic. And obviously, we want to stick with a plan that works. So the minor changes or the updates that you made are simply to correct the data to current dates, right?
Right. You had to provide five years' worth of data, so we took the tables with the 14 through 19 data and updated them to 1923 data.
But there's no, there are no major changes that I could see to any of the plan here, other than requiring what the state requires now for freeze protection and things like that.
We updated website links.
Right, but they make no other requirement for you to change anything unless there's a change in the state law?
Correct.
Or federal law, for that matter?
Correct.
Right? Okay.
That's all you?
I think so. I think so. I think so. I may come back, though.
Okay. Any further discussion? Okay. Anybody want to make a motion?
I'll make the motion that we approve Agenda Item 19, Ordinance Number 2024-132, Amending Code of Ordinances, Chapter 22, Utilities, Article 2210, Water Division 2, Water Conservation Drought Contingency Plan. Section 221031, Adoption by Amending the City Water Conservation and Drought Contingency Plan to Update Historical Water Use Information.
Okay, we have a motion?
Second?
Councilman Kix-Miller? All right, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? No? Perfect. Thank you. Motion passes 6-0. Okay, we'll move into late work session. Status reports on current projects and discussion on future agenda items. Does anyone have anything they'd like? Going forward? Y'all are making this way too easy on me tonight.
Could've eased you in.
Thank you.
For the first time.
Yeah, you want me to come back? You want me to come back? I appreciate it. All right, well, if nobody has anything, then that will conclude the Highland Village City Council meeting, and we are adjourned at 7:57 PM.